I got in. So you gave me the number, right? So I do not have my thing unmuted on the laptop, correct? I don't want to have, I'm saying I don't, I don't want to have unmuted on the laptop. I just want to have the video. Or do I want to have a video?
I want the video on.
Can you guys hear us now?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hey, look at that, isn't technology great?
Here I was thinking we were going to get a reprieve.
No, we have Ohio, we have a crack crew of technologists over here. So did you guys get the email with the 30-page addendum that just came out?
Shut up. I'm going to say, good night, everybody.
All right.
Well, you took long our break than I expected.
Is your, turn off your, your microphone on your laptop. Are you, are you able to hear me?
Got it.
Erica, can you hear me?
I just turned it off. Okay. Okey dokey. Well, here we are.
Page 27 we were on here? We just finished page 27.
Right, so.
Finished 27.
We were just finishing up the projecting.
Yep.
And now we're on to the canopy signs and outings.
Yes.
Earlier explanation as to how they differed, sort of.
Yeah, there are different types of signs. And essentially, we're allocating them per building or per tenant suite with exterior pedestrian entrance, same as some of the other signs. Now, these are in the office districts. Again, this is not retail. So that's that's those.
Right.
Okay. Wayfinding signs, these are your entrance signs, exit signs, essentially. Well, that's what they are, and we haven't changed the the dimensions at all, six square feet max. They're supposed to be small, three feet high, you know, so they don't block too much view, and they're not a dominant sign type. And we want them, they can be lit, though. Maximum of two per curb cut be the count. One sign that's making a big comeback in the world is the painted mural sign. So that is something that we've added in here. And it can be indirect lit, like indirectly lit, like the gooseneck lighting that's shown. Essentially, just want to make sure that it's not, you know, covering up the whole facade of the building, so we limit it to one-eighth of the total facade wall area, including the glass portion of the wall, so that it's not a dominant feature, but more and more, we're seeing people wanting to do a painted mural sign. As far as the freestanding hanging sign, these, this is typically for smaller office applications or smaller type uses. That's a more intimate looking sign. And one per curb cut. And this is technically, I guess, a pole sign. That's why we accept it out from the prohibition on pole signs, because it does project off of a pole. Eight square feet maximum. And it can't be taller than five feet. And it has to be in close proximity to the building pedestrian entrance. It's supposed to, you know, identify, kind of be off a sidewalk, leading to the pedestrian entrance. But not less than five feet from the right of way.
I noticed this one doesn't have anything about lighting.
Oh, good catch. That one, we need to add illumination in. So that one, these would be illuminated indirectly.
Yeah.
Good call. All right. Limited duration signs. We included patio umbrella signs in here, because sometimes you do have a cafe or whatnot on the ground floor of some of these office buildings and things, so, and they do have outdoor dining and patio areas. Really, what we're trying to do is not have the entire umbrella be a logo area or be a sign, and then have, you know, 10 umbrellas with these signs, so trying to put a maximum of 20% of the total umbrella area with every other panel, at least of the umbrella being left blank. And we've put a duration here during business hours only, essentially, sort of like the wrapped vehicle sitting on property. We don't want these to become signs in of themselves that remain permanent, so we're proposing that they would only be allowed during business hours, and they should be closed after business hours. And then, you know, same kind of thing with the yard signs, small. One thing you don't see here are the counts. And I think the count for the small yard signs was something we were debating back and forth. And that's probably why I didn't have that correct in the above table. A couple of ways you could do it. We could do an area, total area allowance of all the signs, and we put in 36 square feet. So, I mean, you could do a total area of six square feet for a total allowance of 36 square feet. You could put total count of five at six square feet. It doesn't, I guess there are a couple approaches. You could do a total count, or you could just do a total area. I don't know if you need both.
So. I mean, where you have it now, you could have six signs if there were six square feet.
Yeah.
You could have 12 signs if they were three square feet.
Correct.
The same with the large sign.
The large sign, we do have a count on one per lot, two per cabin development. But the yard sign, the small ones, it's debatable. You know, do you want, is it okay to have 12, three, three square footers, or do you, would you rather have five, you know, six or six, sorry, six, six square footers? And that's just, you know, up to you all to.
So here's, here's an unrelated question to that. We have durations on the patio and temporary banner. Are there, do we need to put any kind of duration on the yard signs?
Yeah, that's, that's the tricky part, so. Putting them, putting durations on the yard, on the large yard sign is tough, because those tend to be real estate signs. Even though we can't call them that, that's what they end up being, so how can you say, you know, you can only have it up for so long, you're going to have it up as long as it takes to sell the thing? And then the other problem with that is, you know, same thing with the for lease signs that the big brokerages put up. You know, they tend to leave those up forever, as long as there's any. So I just don't know if that's practical. For the small yard signs, then we start running into the problems, because again, we can't call them political signs, but that's what they're going to be. So I.
This is, these are for office districts, right? So they, I mean, they could be political, but they would probably not be. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah. Hard to say. So it's probably, you're right, it's probably less of a concern here, but.
I just was bringing you up as a question.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, it's really.
If this is something where duration isn't an issue, then I'm not going to worry about it. You could always have, you know, that it has to, you know, if it's going to be up for longer than three months or some sort of time, you know, must get approval from, you know, the city for additional duration, but then they gets into kind of an arbitrary, you know.
Right.
Application. So, yeah, I don't know.
Let me ask a question about some places, especially restaurants in their patio area. You'll see, like, the little banners on a string, say Budweiser, you know, middle light or whatever. Would those ever be allowed?
Are those, are you talking about like the streamers?
Yeah, it's kind of like a streamer, but you like little triangle flags along the whole thing. And it'll have a, typically a manufacturer of a beer product.
Yep. So I have to go back up here and look at the prohibited and exempt signs.
I mean, may see those on March 17th.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know what you're talking about. I just I'd have to go look up above and see if that would fall under any of those.
May 5th, July 4th.
Oh, yeah.
Any kind of sports season, you see a lot of like during football season and stuff.
Yeah, you may see teams on there, whatever, but the question is.
Interprposed with Budweiser.
So that would be, I would, I would consider that a, either a flag or streamer. I don't think so, but I'll nick and note of it.
And then on your temporary banner sign, there's no illumination, is there a desire to address that?
Duration is on there for that one. And that's currently what you allow. Illumination would be none on this. Essentially, these temporary signs, limited duration signs will not be illuminated. Otherwise, they become more like permanent signs.
Because the other ones, you say not permitted to have any illumination.
He's just saying for the temporary banner, there's no note that it's not.
There's no reference one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm going to add that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Now we're into the commercial and industrial districts. Including the DV1 and DV4. Dumbody Village. And Monument, single panel, panel, Monument, multi-panel, this is all the same, wall sign. Projecting blade sign. Canopy announcing sign. Wayfinding sign, painted mural sign, freestanding hanging sign. Can add an illumination there as well.
Unless you, where are you?
I'm just blazing through here. Yeah. If you have any questions, this is the same stuff, though, generally, the same.
Same signs as before, but under different districts.
Yep.
Okay, so everything's the same for this as it was in the
office district.
Oh, and I? Or commercial.
These are the same sign categories, the same, you know, general regulations and standards, but they may be a little different as far as the numbers. The actual standards. But it should be pretty self-explanatory. If you have any questions, I can answer them, but.
The one I see, just looking ahead, is that same elimination issue.
Yeah.
Page 39 for the temporary banner size.
I'll get, I'll get that as well as the freestanding sign.
Yeah, and same with on page 38.
Yes.
Yeah, one item here that we're generally introducing is the direct lighting. Like, like a big difference compared to the previous ones.
Which is the one that's different?
The direct lighting gets introduced here, so the commercial districts, they have those directly illuminated signs.
So that would be from within, the lighting from within versus just gooseneck lighting or flood lighting, so for retail, and, you know, it's more, more acceptable and more typical that there would be lighting from within, whether that be lighting from within a channel letter or individual letters. Or lighting from within the sign itself, or halo or shadow light from behind.
So, other than adding direct lighting, what's, what's different in all these?
Not much.
If, because the reason I say that is, if, if there's no difference in the same comments, we would have for the, oh, and I would apply here.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
So there are a couple of things I'm noticing, though, like if you look at page 37 and page 29. There are some sign height requirements that are carried over to here. Is that important?
Which ones in particular?
Look at the wayfinding sign on page 29 and the wayfinding sign on page 37.
Okay, 29.
Have a total sign height on page 29, and you don't have that on 37.
I would assume they should be.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, just, just, yeah, just double check the consistency.
Yeah.
For items that are supposed to be consistent across this.
Yeah, I think it's been left off of the commercial and then it's industrial.
Let me put that in real quick here. Yes, you're right, that needs to be three max.
So I guess the point is making sure the consistency between.
Double check to make sure that.
Yep, that's the purpose of this, all right, sign. Little height.
So for the limited duration sign, you added this.
Illumination. Not permitted to temporary banner sign. What else?
So I jumped to page 39, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, that's an additional difference between the office and these retail districts or other commercial districts. So you have the sandwich board sign. Essentially, it's located where the building is located on a public sidewalk. And it must be located within three feet of the main entrance. What we're trying to avoid there are putting those sandwich board signs out on the, in the driveways. Or up along the right of way, or really, it needs to be neck, near the building. It should be a pedestrian-oriented sign. It should be guiding a pedestrian to something and, but also should not be in the middle of the sidewalk, so that if you were walking, or if you're in a, you know, wheelchair or something, it gets in, in your way, so that's we're trying to accomplish there.
Is there a reason that that has a 12-hour max duration? But the patio umbrellas are business hours? I'm just curious. I think that both are, either one is fine. I can just imagine a situation where you have, I don't, I don't know when Dumbody Tavern opens for lunch, but let's say they open at 10:30 and they shut down at midnight. And they want to put a sandwich board out. They'd have to wait a couple hours to put it out, for example. But if they had umbrellas, they could have.
So you think like 14 hours instead?
Or just, just during duration of business hours. I don't know how critical this is, I'm just.
During business hours.
Yeah, I think that's good. We can, we can.
I agree with that. Just like with the umbrellas. For the, for the sandwich board, it says it has to be wood.
Plasticky things.
Well, I guess the only other option I could see is if it was like a chalkboard, you'll see some people that are do chalkboard, like a design and special is the whatever shrimp, you know. But if it's a wood frame.
It's a good point.
That was wood. But yeah, I agree, you don't want something, you know, kind of plasticky and.
You don't want the cheap plastic ones, but you, if it's, I mean, sometimes they're glass and they right on them. Or plastic, I mean, it, with that special market that they use.
Yeah.
They have those all over the perimeter center, and then to your point, there, there's chalk ones that people draw, day. There's parking for, you know, pickup. They're all over the place.
So maybe let's just put a note to kind of, is this something that, that Sean, you could look at, just kind of what materials might be reasonable for high-quality sandwich board signs?
Yeah, we could also, instead of listing all that are permitted, we could just say no plastic or vinyl or something like that.
That's true, good point.
Maybe we do that, because things are changing so often. We know we don't want.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at that, though.
And then by the way, that location, like where I live over there, it's, it's nothing but sidewalk. They can only put on the sidewalk, otherwise it'd be in the road. We have location for the sandwich boards? All, it's all sidewalk, or the retail, it's either road or sidewalk. So I'm not sure that's applicable.
Permitted where buildings are located on public sidewalks only. The buildings are on public sidewalks, right? Or they're private?
It's, it's private, private property. I mean, it's owned by a company, building.
So those.
But they're always in the sidewalk. I mean, you walk around, everybody walks around.
Is that Dumbody Village?
No, it's in, it's in perimeter center.
Oh, in perimeter, okay.
Yeah, it's actually, they're changing the name of it. Just, somebody just bought it and they're changing the name of it.
I would take public out of there.
Okay. Just on sidewalks, yeah.
Cool.
Okay. All right. Then we get into the perimeter center. Now, this is obviously a very unique part of the city. A lot more intense than other portions of the city, so the signage reflects that. Monument signs to maximum per major vehicular entrance. And I think that's defined, if it's not, I'm going to highlight it and make sure it is up to 10 maximum per common development. This is five maximum per.
What was it? Which one is it?
Yeah, so two max per major up to 10, it should be five max per minor. They have those side entrances that are the major, you know, vehicular entrance, but they have secondary entrances, so that's where we're going for. Location in the street yards only, 36 square feet max on a single panel, 64 on the multi-panel. Six feet high or 10 feet high on the multi-panel, so that's going to be your tallest sign in the, in the city. And then the materials, sign-based materials. The sign base itself, we have a height standard in here, has to be at least one feet, one foot, I should say, minimum, or up to three feet maximum. So that's for the base of the sign itself. Indirect, direct, shadow, halo, so lighting, pretty flexible there. A 10 feet minimum from the right of way. That's because these are larger signs, we pull them back from the road, further than some of the other signs, which we had at five feet. And then in the perimeter, you can do up to a maximum of 40% of the total sign face area as an electronic messaging center. On up to four total of the max of the monument signs. But you can't have an EMC up to 40% on every single one of these monument signs at every entrance to perimeter center. That's sort of the compromise there. So they can pick up the four total and have up to 40% of the sign be EMC, so that's pretty pretty, pretty generous.
To be, I have a question first. Some of the signs of perimeter now are essentially in the right of way. If, if you've noticed, long astronomer, you'll see either apartment signs or office building signs or developer signs in the right of way. How are they dealt with? I mean, because they're, it's like the rose there, and you have an island four feet wide, and then you have a sign.
So from our center west.
And east.
Well, the ones up furnace are east, we took those down because we found out the owner, and we approached them, and they didn't take care of them, and said, fine, we'll take them down. We're eventually working towards all of it, that they can all stay. Until they get run over.
Aren't there some for the apartment complexes right across from the terraces in California Pizza Kitchen?
Maybe the right of way is very funny, so like down by the perimeter mall, it's literally right at the back.
I'm taking a ride in or ride out, and it's got the real long acceleration lane on the opposite side of the terraces, the bricks apartment complex. I thought the signs for those several apartment complexes there were in the median to the road that goes back between the office building on the right. And, and, and the newer development where Zen Burgers is, was. I thought those were in the median.
Yeah.
So how would this address those?
So they can keep them as long as they.
So many crashes into them. Okay. Second question I had, and this is to clarify the count. What did you decide on 10 max per common development and five max per what?
So, so we were doing two max per major vehicular entrance up to 10. So we counted five major vehicular entrances. So there would be a 10 total. And then five max per minor vehicular, so they could get up to five monument signs for the smaller entrances.
Do we need to see to add that clarification?
Yes, yeah.
Tell me what the, how, how do I know if it's a major or minor vehicle entrance?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to make sure.
Is that defined?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to make sure it is. I don't know.
Only main entrance is defined right now, so it'll, we have major and minor frontage, but the entrance is not defined, there's no need to be.
So that would need to be defined to clarify what you mean by that?
Yes.
Because in my mind's eye, I couldn't tell you what it is.
No, it needs to be defined, or, or we can, well, I think, I think there has to be a hierarchy of signs there, unless you tell me otherwise. You know, maybe they could all be big signs. I.
I mean, if you have 10, period. I mean, the biggest ones affected by it is, of course, perimeter mall. And then secondly, the Target Shopping Center complex.
Yeah.
And then some, you know, down from there. So is, is 10 not enough? I mean, compared to what they have today?
10, that's five big entrances. That's a lot of entrances.
Well, I'm thinking Target.
Target. Five on Target.
Or three, five. I think Target has.
Five, right?
Five, five entrances.
This would cover that.
圍围 Mall, how many do they have? You start, one, two.
A lot more, they get two.
Four.
Five. They probably have six or seven.
10 entrances.
Yeah, they have a bunch, but I wouldn't call all of them primary.
Yeah. I'm inclined to go with the consultant that.
Well, I mean.
When they were on the steering committee, the mall was.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so yeah, so I mean, there are some that are smaller entrances.
I know it.
And some don't have any signs on them at all right now. You then you see there's the mall right there and you turn in and go.
I get that. Well, I mean, that's something you should. Probably touch base with for a little while to make sure that they're set. They're covered.
Oh, yeah, I thought they were on the the planning steering committee.
Okay, that's that. Yeah, I mean, that's if if they were okay with that before, then they should be there.
We could also do uh where we say, you know, you get up to ten. Large. Well.
Interferences, ten, ten, ten access points.
Well, I'm just thinking, yeah, maybe you get up to excellent, you know, get up to ten total. Monument signs and and we don't, we're not gonna tell you which ones are major or minor. You you decide.
Agree with that.
Just to see, make it simple, you know?
So if you said. Ten signs.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Hello?
Oh. Did you have another comment on that?
I'm sorry.
Did I think Sean was asking if he had another comment on the monuments?
No.
I say we could do two per entrance up to a maximum total number. And then let them pick.
Okay.
What those are.
They might not even want two at each entrance.
And that way we don't have to define what a major vehi- vehicular entrance or a minor vehicular entrance and get into all that complexity. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable. Also, I just did an aerial view of the perimeter mall, which is I think one of our. If not largest development areas and that has only what I can count from an aerial view is five entrances. So.
Yeah, that's what I was going off of as well. And some of them, you know, there's. Some of them are, you know, large, like the um. The one in Ashford Dunwoody Road. I mean, that's a huge boulevarded entrance. That's like a main entrance, but then some along the Hammond Drive are smaller. Less prominent, I guess you would say.
Alright.
So I wanted to clarify um. One comment I think was made about. Uh, the apartment complexes near there, the prior comment. And. About signs being in the right of way. Are those signs that are? I I kind of, uh, when I was looking at this, I was looking at those signs in the boulevards. Of the entrances as being on private property. Are those public streets or some of them public and some of them private?
Lot of them are public.
Okay.
And they did.
Okay, so that so. Okay, I'm just trying to. Because some some of them look like development entrances, but you're you're saying that those are public even though they're. Internal maybe to.
Which one you're looking at.
Okay.
A lot of those signs in the medians are in the public right away.
Okay. Alright, that's good to know. I don't think I. I knew that so that may, I'm gonna make a note of that so that I can go back and look. At all of this with that in mind. Boulevard signs. Alright, thank you for that clarification. Staying with the perimeter center. Moving from monument sign um. Wall signs. Now, this one. Is is similar. We've got it, you know, similar to the uh other commercial districts. Relative to wall signage, but then we do also have a high rise construction provision for buildings over seventy five feet, which would be. Uh, how the building code would define a high rise building. And so for every one foot of building height. Uh, we tried to scale this, so if you one and a half square feet. Maximum sign area per sign. That would be allowed on the parapet. On the upper portion of the building. And that would be the top twenty five percent of the building. That would be the upper portion of the building. Two signs max on the two most prominent building of the elevations. And so we would either need to find that or let them pick, but. Essentially is trying to scale it. Based on what you've already allowed, using State Farm as an example.
Is. So this would accommodate the existing signs that are on the buildings?
It should. I I can't say that for sure. We'd have to run uh runs, run some calculations, but it it should. Yes, so maybe something. That the um city staff can help. Figure out because I think you guys have the exact dimensions of those signs. I I was going off of Google Earth.
So. I mean, realistically, I mean. I guess my question is, some companies have very short names, obviously some are much longer. And um. So in your experience. Does this tend to accommodate all the? Relevant companies out there?
Well, yeah, you you really, it's really more about the scale of the sign to the building. So um. If it's a longer name, they're gonna have to have smaller letters essentially. Uh, to accommodate it. I I just, I I don't know any way around that unless you start. Regulating the letter heights and letter sizes and that kind of thing, which we're not. Not posing here. How how was the, how were those signs approved? Were those approved through your Wallstein standards, Richard, or was that through some other kind of site plan approval process?
I I thought we changed the code to accommodate that because at one time they weren't allowed.
Yeah, they were approved by the. Planner who reviewed them against the old sign code.
Okay. So those those were just considered wall signs?
Yeah, like the ones on State Farm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they say you have State Farm IHG.
IHG is probably one of the largest signs, but it's the tallest building.
Yeah. But I mean, you have to look for the potential of, you know, what? New tenants might want on their building if they rent it out. And you know, just it needs to be, when it's that high up, I mean. You needs to be big.
Yeah.
I I I just don't know scale wise. If, and that's why I'm asking for your experience. Is this big enough?
To accommodate. If it's a four hundred foot tall building. You would get um. A six hundred square foot sign. Up on the parapet, you'd get actually two. And I calculated the State Farm sign at like uh to look back at it. It was like three hundred and fifty square feet, something like that. Be four hundred square feet. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think that would give you plenty of. Plenty of sign space. Of course, it's scaled to the height of the building too. So if it's not a four hundred foot building, I don't know what State Farm is, if that's three hundred fifty feet or four hundred feet. Two fifty, I I'm not sure, but it looks pretty. It's probably what a thirty, twenty five, thirty story.
They did a taller ones thirty, but. If you went across the street, it's um fourteen stories tall. When the new one next to the martyr station.
So you can do um the way we've got calculated about two hundred and ten foot square foot sign. Pretty, pretty sizable. It's ten by. Ten feet by twenty one feet.
It looked really small when you're down on the ground looking up at.
Yeah, but but your signs, I mean, they're very tasteful, I think. That State Farm sign is scaled nicely. It's not. Not out of whack at all.
Well, like I say, just. It's what I say, you wanna be market sensitive too. Anything else on this one, folks? Alright. Then you have, you wanna move on to your uh audience canopy? Are they the same?
Same.
And same with the projecting blade sign?
Same.
Uh, secondary. Secondary signs about the same?
Same, I need to, was there one of them? No, I think that.
Oh, yeah, roof sign. Yeah, roof signs.
Roof sign, that's the different one. Um, this one, we would allow two maximum per a common developments. If you think of um. Perimeter Center Mall or something, that would be a common development. We would allow up to two max roof signs in there. Uh, but again, that's. Completely, you know, a judgment call on. How many of these you would like to have? You know, the different types of materials, you know, there's all kinds of different types of materials. So we try to be pretty broad about those without them being uh plastic, you know, internally lit signs. Eighty square foot maximum. I need to remove that note scale building size. Um, eighty square feet would be eight by ten approximately, right? So. Maybe that's not a large roof sign. It could be much larger than that. I don't know what the one at. Shambly is, it's probably worth looking at. Supports are another issue when you're talking about roof signs. So. You know, we try to make it so that they're not visible from the ground. You want, you want the roof sign to be the dominant feature, not the supports. Um, but again, in some industrial looking settings, the supports add to the. Character, but I'm not sure that's really the. The aesthetic you haven't done, Woody. So I I don't, I don't know. I didn't put that in, but I mean, it may not be a big deal. No electronic message centers on these. Indirect, direct or individual bulb lighting. I believe the individual bulb lighting is what they have at that Shambly sign. Five foot maximum from the edge of the roof. Uh, so that's to kind of. Pull it towards the edge of the building and and so that it's not too far back. Uh, or in the middle of the roof, which can look kind of. Uh, a little bit out of scale and then hide part of the sign. May not even have to regulate that. I mean, most people are gonna be doing this. They're gonna wanna put it closest to the edge as possible. Total sign height above the roof. So this would be the highest point of the sign, how high up. So this is your ten feet. So would, you know, you could go up ten feet, you could, you could do eight feet, ten feet wide, or you go up ten feet and eight feet wide. To get to your eighty square foot maximum, if that's where we land. Uh, and then this would be on flat roofs. We wouldn't. Allow these on pitched roofs or hip roofs or gamble. Uh, roofs, so um. Uh, you see that sometimes and. This is just, I mean, this is a suggestion again. A a lot of this is just gonna be preference based on. You know, uh. Trying to be uh character sensitive and aesthetically pleasing and fitting in with, you know, surroundings, that kind of stuff. I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer to to any of this. If you're gonna allow for roof signs, it's really about. How big do you want them to be? How bright? It's, again, it's just a a policy decision, really.
I have a question about the roof signs and then I wanna go back to the um signs that stick out from the building just really quickly, but um for the roof signs. The the shambly one works really well because eh. It's it's as much artistic as it is like, hey, welcome to Shambly, right? It's also on a tall building. I don't. I don't know how well or I don't know. It's something for commissioners to consider, like on a one story building, would a roof sign be allowed to be put on if it had a flat roof? I mean, uh, uh, the way I read this, it looks like it would be allowed. I don't know if that's the kind of thing we want to allow. So maybe we should have a minimum building height.
Yeah, certainly. The the graphic shows a one story building with a roof sign. So, yeah, you're right.
So that would be um, and then just uh really quickly before I forget, if we buzz back to. Um, in the perimeter center, the uh projecting blade signs, if you compare the um requirements on this one, um as an example. Extension beyond building facade, it's a three foot max, but if you go back to the um. To the commercial one, it's a four foot max. And then this is a sign face area twelve foot max um. Square foot max, and I think the commercial was eight foot. So I'm I'm was curious why the difference is in those numbers.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, on this. Let's see, so there was a smaller sign on the commercial districts, but it was allowed to project further out.
Yes.
That um. For, let's look at that real quick. So extend beyond the, so. Couple differences, I think, between these districts and uh the perimeter. The perimeter is gonna be a little bit more internal. I think it is. Uh, probably more uh auto oriented, even though there are some pedestrian oriented areas. I think this is probably, these other districts might be. I I I don't know exactly. I guess it's the long and short of it, but. I I think we could. If there are any differences, it had, it's going to have to do with pedestrian versus auto oriented in the scale of the. Buildings. Uh, the scale of the buildings, the perimeter are much larger. That's when a sign is signage is larger. The extension could probably be the same.
Yep, I I was just curious about the discrepancy between the two.
Yeah, we should probably make that four. We can make them larger signs because they're larger scale buildings. Maybe we'll just do the four feet. And make that consistent. It's good, good call.
Okay, and then um, and just going back to the roof sign, I mean. I would love to hear from the other commissioners. My preference would be to put a minimum building um stories and or height. For roof sign allowances. Uh, just because I think otherwise we could run into a situation of things looking a little tacky.
How how tall? Who would you say the minimum would be?
Bob asked how, what should the minimum height be, do you think?
Um, for me. Somewhere three or fi- three to five stories, somewhere in that.
Well, if you look where um. Like. The best buys is that building is, that's a two story building.
Right, so we might need to do more of a um. Of like a a number of of feet versus just stories. So we could set, you know, between the two. I mean, I could see, again, you know, thinking. Perimeter district, you have one of those really, the two story building where, you know, the base floor is got, it's not your typical. You know, twelve feet, maybe it's a fourteen, sixteen foot base floor plus a, you know, another twelve foot. Um, so. That essentially puts you three stories up, even though it's only two. So I I'm not sure how to word this other than I think. I think we should set some sort of minimum either height. Of the building or. Or and or stories. I'm I'm not sure which um. But I just, I am, I personally am uncomfortable with, you know. Not putting any minimum.
If you want proportion, I think you should go by height, not stories. Because that's where you're gonna get the balance and the size of the sign versus the size of the building.
Right.
Yeah, so like thirty two V?
Richard, um, and or, I mean, just.
Thirty six feet for our tallest homes, right?
So why don't we do um?
Yeah.
For DB three. It says three stories or I think it's. Good measure too, because we could uh increase the size of the. Floors. So either one or the other, whichever is less.
How how our maximum um house height is what? Thirty six? How, how, our maximum house height is what? Thirty six feet? So, I mean, I would think if you look at the location of the best buys. I mean, that whole complex, those are tall two stories. Right. For that complex next to it. And so. You know. I would think thirty two feet is probably. In the neighborhood of what that is, if not forty feet.
Except these are not going to be residential buildings, so they're going to be taller. So it's probably going to be like forty two feet.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We can just use three stories or I think it's forty two feet.
You say three stories or forty feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, and we'll just pull it out of the DB three village code.
Alright.
So we'll, we'll change the image too then.
Alright, anymore on move signs? We have wayfaring signs, which I guess will be the same as the others.
I think the sign heights are a little bigger on these.
It was a bigger sign.
Four feet versus three feet, right?
But other than that, I mean, just because it's bigger developments.
You want them higher? I mean, do they, does one need to be higher than the other? I don't know.
Yeah, the, the ones in perimeter center tend to be taller and more narrow. And they're actually a little bit different. They're. If you look around, they're, they're tall and thin and they have multiple. Like arrows directing you to different retailers and things like that. So we tried to make them a little bit. Little bit taller than, than the ones that might be on at a SunTrust Bank, for example. At the entrances to those banks. That's tends to be who uses those a lot. Or hotels.
Right. Free standing entrance sign.
And that one needs an illumination again on it.
Alright. Limited duration signs. What's, what's new here?
We have to update the materials on sandwich board here as well.
Yep.
Yes.
Are we looking for the same criteria here as?
Yeah, I would think.
Of course, what we've added here is electric signs at the bottom.
Yeah.
Also the sandwich board. This is interesting. Sandwich board in the. So we want to change the, the materials here. Let's wood and metal. Versus the other commercial was just wood. So I just think we should align those two.
Yeah, I think Sean was going to change it to the other one to something.
Yeah, not plastic or, yeah.
And adjust the duration to business hours.
Yeah, I mean, figure out what the best looking stuff is out there.
And my point here, when this one is. Not blocking sidewalk, the perimeter center, it's all sidewalk. And perimeter marketplace, that's perimeter center, perimeter marketplace. It's all sidewalk.
Well, but is there egress past the signs that are out?
Yeah, you just have to go walk around them. I mean, if you don't, and the sidewalks widen up to just walk around it. If you don't walk around, go in the road.
Yeah, as long as you can get by without going in the road, I think you're not blocking the sidewalk.
Sean, we define it as either right adjacent to the building or out by. A curb or tree wells.
Yeah, what we, what we sometimes will do is say, as long as there's a. A, it maintains a clear. Path. This is mostly for people who. Are immobile or in wheelchairs. They're the ones that end up running into these things and they have nowhere to go, you know?
Yeah, the sidewalks in perimeter marketplace are like, I don't know, eight feet, 10 feet wide. Was rather all the time.
So that it shouldn't be a big problem then. Okay.
So what is a portable temporary electric sign?
Um, that. Let me just look at your current code. I think that came from there, but let me see here. Yeah. So that's a sign, I think that's in your current code. I'll look, but that, that's going to be one of those signs that. They use during the holidays to direct. Traffic when things are.
Okay.
Totally out of control.
Okay.
That's, it's only perimeter mall that does that.
That's, I just, I saw it, I had it in my mind, what am I being?
But worried that if we put it in there, anybody can use them, so.
Yeah.
And then.
Police, don't the police use those on proper private property sometimes like that, that radar sign? You're going thirty five miles an hour, but then put it in somebody's yard.
Well, they're in the right away.
Those are always in the right of way, even when they're on people's yards.
Yeah, because I mean, the right of way extends back beyond the utilities.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know if this would work. Portable temporary electric sign is approved by. Our, you know, whoever's in charge of our roads.
Yeah, the public works director.
Yeah, by, is approved by the public works director or police chief, which would cover directing traffic. During the, the holiday season, but not that other, everybody think they could get this.
We would say is location approved by.
I would say use and location approved by.
Location, you could approve it based on some criteria like safety.
Yeah.
Whether you get to do it or not, what's your criteria?
I would take it out.
Just remove it.
Because. Police chief and the public works director approved. The mall signage for. Never signs during the holidays. That's.
You're saying this is not needed?
Just trying, yes.
Yeah. I mean. Worst case scenario is every property or perimeter has one of these.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want that. We want it to actually be for directing traffic.
And I'd be confused where to go.
Yeah. Come here, here, here.
Sorry. Anything else on temporary signs? Or secondary signs? Alright, we're at quasi. Public institutional uses.
Right, so a lot of these, I mean, this, these are your religious churches, synagogues and. You know, other types of facilities, maybe it's a YMCA or JSC or whatever. And they. There, they tend to, we heard from them and we hear this in a lot of communities is they have events and they want to update people about programming and. Camps or whatever. And so they. Specifically requested that they be allowed signage, obviously. A lot of them are in residential zones or adjacent to residential uses. And so. They may not, you know, get signage by right. On in their current zone. And so that, that was a comment. That we need to accommodate these types of uses and some signs. So. We. Have incorporated three different sign types that. Could be permitted in. The quasi-publicist for quasi-public institutional uses, which are defined in your zoning code. And so the building entrance sign, one per building entrance. Up to four square feet maximum. Now, that's going to be a wall sign. Again, we talked about where the sign could be located in the materials. And no electronic messaging center and it can be illuminated. Then we also, the, the big request is for the monument sign, a single panel monument sign. One per major, we can get rid of that. One per vehicular entrance up to two max. So if they have two, you know, most of these places will have two entrances. They would like to have a sign at each monument sign of each. Up to thirty six square feet, which is commensurate with commercial monument sign. Area in, in Dunwoody's. So we're treating them. The same as we would a commercial sign. A total sign height of six square feet, again, similar in, in scale to a commercial sign. We also. Regulate sign face materials, sign base materials, want to be attractive, of course. Sign base height, just like we do in perimeter center. Illumination types setbacks. In, in these signs, they specifically requested EMC. And so we're talking about forty percent of the total sign face area being electronic messaging center. Actually, if, if there's an EMC component. We would prefer that it be all EMC and then the signage and not a manual changeable. Copy along with EMC. Those are the whole channel letters that you would stick up. If there's manual changeable copy, then there wouldn't be any EMC allowed. So you get to pick one or the other. Just depending on, on, you know, a lot of times it comes down to budget for these. These organizations. And then as far as wayfinding signs, you know, that's also an important component because people need to go know which entrance they're going in and out of. There's a lot of traffic associated with these uses. We want to make sure that there's, that's being directed. So we allow two maximum per curb cut. Six square feet up to four square, four foot maximum. Probably. Reduce that down to three feet to be a little bit more. Residential and scale. If you wanted to, but that's generally the, the sign package for a. Quasi-public institutional use.
Any more comments on those for you guys? Right, moving on to twenty twenty eight, which is the nonconformities. We talked a little bit about it before, but.
Did, and, and I really didn't change anything. I'm going to look just to confirm that, but I didn't really change anything here.
Thought we discussed in twenty twenty nine, adding a reference to the residential areas.
In the right of way.
Yeah, we.
For the rebuilds of those monuments that are, you know, neighborhood entrances that might be nonconforming.
Yes, we're going to do that, we'll add that in. Other than that, I mean, this does tend to be an important section of your sign code. Because one of the ways to eliminate outdated, unwanted, abandoned signs is. For them to become nonconforming signs over time and then. For them to lose their, you know, their, their right, their vested rights and to be able to be removed. And so that sometimes takes a while, but. You, you may not be experiencing it much in Dunwoody, which has a pretty robust. Economy, but in some places, you know, you have signs that are abandoned and they, they sit there forever. And so you eventually want to cut off that, that right and make it come down. So these tend to be important provisions. There are legal, obviously, they're very. You know, they, they impact property rights. So I didn't, I didn't want to change anything without. City legal council looking at it, so. Anything we do here should definitely be reviewed by your city attorney.
Alright. Anything else on the nonconformity? So the administrative procedures, as I read it. Talks about what the planning community director. Should do for, I guess, all zonings and things that come before you have to incorporate these things.
So these are your administrative procedures. How do you get a sign approved? How do you get a variance? You know, appeals, I didn't change anything in here either. We, we just reorganized. In your current code, some of this, this was spread out among various sections. So we just put it all into one new administrative.
Here, there's a new component here that's the master sign plan. That we didn't have before, which should help with some of the. Larger developments, like the large shopping centers.
Should, should that be a defined term and maybe capitalized throughout this? Do we have specific expectations about what a master sign plan is? Or do we serve guidance as to? How it shall be prepared, to whom it shall be sent?
Yes, it's, it's in this section here, the, what it is, kind of what, which should be in there. And so forth. But this is the section that, that defines the master sign plan. And. So it could be capitalized, but not.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, Paul. Sorry, I glossed over that. But yeah, this, this will make it easier to have packages approved for larger developments. That's, that's an improvement for sure. And that's the end of it.
Well, you've got emergency stuff on the back, appeals and violations.
Yeah, that, that's all part of the, the administration procedures.
Alright.
Can I ask one thing about penalties that there's a, in twenty thirty six, it talks about penalties. General penalty provided in this code. I'm looking at the B section or applying a penalty is authorized in this code. Where are the penalties?
They should be in the other portions of the code itself.
Yeah, cross reference them.
Yeah. I like that.
Commissioners, I would like to offer it up because there's a lot of material in here. And we went through it fairly quickly towards the end. Like if you have any additional notes that you didn't mention now. Please, by any means, do, do email them to me by. By the, by the end of the week or so. So we have it forwarded to Sean. And we'll, we'll have it then included as part of your consideration, should you defer it now.
So we just. So is, is that it for your presentation, Sean?
That ought to do it. You, you now know just about as much as I do about all this. So yeah, look forward to any additional comments. Appreciate all your really good. Detailed comments tonight. It's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, for pulling this together in the staff.
I would also just like remind you that we have a public hearing.
I do, that's what I was going to get to. So we do have public hearing and as we said in the beginning. That we would open up after you went through the presentation and we got to discuss this. So we have twenty minutes that are allocated, ten minutes in favor. And ten minutes opposed. So seeing as I don't see anybody in the audience, the question is on our Zoom call. Are there anybody? Is there anybody on the Zoom call that would like to speak in first, we'll say in favor of this proposal?
We currently have no attendees on the Zoom call.
Alright, and is there anybody who wants to speak against it? So the same answer, nobody's on the Zoom call. Alright, that's correct. That will close the public comment portion. And. With that, do we have any other? Business, I didn't get to that, so I'm assuming we don't. Alright, do we have any commission comments? We'll start with the folks on the Zoom call. Commissioner Harris?
Nothing for me.
Alright.
Mister, Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Wagner?
Or is it? Somebody was saying.
We don't have an action on, on the new business item.
Oh, we do. What?
We have to either defer or.
Oh, that's right, we have to take action. I, I was assuming that we're going to defer. We do have to take action. That's right. So we've gone through this and as we discussed in the beginning. The question of, you know, how was written your comments? They're going to be incorporated into a revision. And so the staff has offered us the opportunity to look at the revision and consider it again, but we have to take action tonight on. Was before us. So with that, are there any motions?
Motion to defer. Action until the next planning commission meeting.
Which is, you just defer our decision on this.
Yeah, so she's. We need a second, that, correct?
We do need a second. Right. Infer, it's a deferral to our next meeting. Is what the motion is, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a second to that?
I'll suck at that.
All right, that was Ed, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that?
Given the length of this document, I think that seems reasonable.
You seem ready to send Tom.
No, I'm just trying to figure out is, is deferral, is deferral on this what we want? Or, well, I guess it probably is, but creating a new document, which is essentially what's going to happen between now and then creates a new issue. If deferral, if we believe deferral is procedurally correct, then. What's the, what's the issue by that it'll create?
Yeah, well.
Right, I, I guess probably, probably nothing if the turnaround time is by next meeting or if, if it doesn't place any artificial constraints on what's going on here, then I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. Yeah, I guess I'm going to get staff's thoughts on deferral and.
Uh, deferral would make sense. That's what I, uh, had talked to with the chairman. We can do it in two ways, depending what's easier for you. We can either give you a red line version of the document for your consideration at the next hearing. And then you can add to it, but it's a basis for your motion at, at the next hearing. We can also, um, send you, uh, an Excel spreadsheet with, with the items that we heard today and include those in there. You know, we were happy for your instruction. What's easiest for you all to, to form a, a motion at, at the next hearing.
I would say track changes just because it would be easiest for you to then.
Redline version.
Yeah, redline version, just to, to finish the document once it's.
Because if, if we don't have the red line version and just Excel, you know, and we won't see exactly what the language looks like.
Here you can make changes to the document.
I think red line version is probably easiest for you to, Sean, right?
Right.
Okay. Yes.
Right.
So.
So I think we're ready to vote on the deferral.
Are you okay with it or, okay? All right. So let's take a vote. All those in favor of the, uh, full cycle of the throw, raise your hand. All right. Any opposed? No. All right. So we'll do that. Thank you all of you for that. Um, it reminded me, we had to take action. Uh, so Ed, you didn't have any comment, right?
Yeah, no comments.
Okay. Robert?
Just that this is quite a bit of work.
It is.
That's gone into this and.
We. You were warned in the beginning.
No, I'm just saying that the, the people, that the team that put this together has put.
It is. And Tom? That's what I made two points. One, um, who was on the stakeholder committee? And I would say thank you to them and all of the staff for working on this because it is a lot of work as, as was noted.
Yeah, we'll bring a list to you next time.
Yeah, please, please do, because we do want to say thank you. Secondly, I, um, observed last night's city council meeting. And I just want to say thank you to the commit, council members and the mayor because they referenced us quite a bit, uh, with respect to the issue of, um, the fences, the question of deferrals and the question of the PD playing development zone. They, and I will say thank you to the staff for bringing it up. And Paul, you did that quite well and saying, well, this is what the planning commissioner said about that. And so I, I, I appreciate that. And I just want to say thank you to all of you and the, uh, elected officials. So I know sometimes we don't get that feedback and I just want to share that with you.
Sounds good.
So is there anything else for the good of the order?
I would, I would like to thank you all. Thank you all, uh, very much. This was a hard chapter to get through, very legal. So thank you.
All right. Well, we look forward to doing it one more time.
Oh, yeah.
Thank all of you. We're adjourned.
Thank you all.